Good morning. Okay, we're not quite to a quorum, but we do have a number of very important presentations today. So let me start by saying this is and shortly will be a meeting of the Los Angeles Council on Friday, July 28th, 2000, and we're going to begin with our weekly series of presentations by recognizing the mayor of Los Angeles as soon as he's ready.
Where is he?
He's over there. Deck, are you ready? I'd like to start by recognizing the mayor of Los Angeles, Richard Reardon.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Today it's my great honor to commemorate a momentous time in the history and in the lives of many disabled Angelinos. Ten years ago, then-President Bush signed the Americans with Disabilities Act, the most sweeping legislation ever for disability rights for those who need help. It ensures that people with disabilities will not experience employment discrimination nor lack of accessible facilities. But as always, Los Angeles was ahead of the game. Twenty years before the ADA, Los Angeles was already providing Angelinos with special needs, access throughout the city, and we've accelerated that, but we still have a ways to go. And Los Angeles continues to help those in need by giving them positions of power because they're the ones who know what is needed. I don't, certainly. I am honored to commemorate the 10th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act and I'm proud of the strides that we've taken. Congratulations again to Los Angeles. Congratulations to my friends with disabilities who have become the leaders to make us the role model throughout the country for helping people with disabilities. Thank you all very, very much. Thank you. And Los Angeles has the first department for disabilities. It's run by a very special friend of mine, a great leader, great human being, Sharon Morris.
Good morning. We really want, from the department, want to thank the mayor and the council for having the foresight to create the first Department on Disability in the country. We've been in place for two years now. We think that the city has moved forward tremendously in the last two years with the leadership that you have all shown. And I also want to take the opportunity to acknowledge the organizations and disability activists that are here today. Many of the folks here today were involved in the disability rights movement before the ADA and really caused the ADA to happen. They talked to all of you, they talked to the mayor's office, and were movers and shakers in getting the department formed, and I really want to thank them for their hard work and really give them a round of applause. And I also want to acknowledge our sister departments that have been working with us to implement the ADA transition plan, the Bureau of Engineering, Street Services, Building and Safety, Recreation and Parks, Sanitation. We really have a plethora of organizations that have really committed themselves and worked with us on a daily basis to get the job done in Los Angeles to make sure that we have full civic participation in the city of Los Angeles. Another department that's worked with us closely and plays a major role in the disability rights movement is our Human Relations Commission. I want to bring up Joe Hicks to say a few words.
Thank you very much, Sharon, and it's certainly a pleasure to be here on this important 10th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act. It's been, I think, a long and hard struggle to make sure that all Americans are treated with a sense of dignity and inclusion and all of their rights respected and protected regardless of skin color, religion, gender, sexual orientation, and obviously, of course, disability. The 1964 Civil Rights Act was a landmark piece of legislation, as was the 1965 Voting and work very closely with Sharon to make sure that that commission and our commission work very hard to make sure that people with disabilities have their rights consistently protected and looked after. Thank you again for allowing me to be here with you today.
I'd also like to acknowledge that we have some of our commissioners here today. If the commissioners would please stand. We've got Commissioner Karen Henderson-Wing. And Commissioner John Rodriguez. Greg Evangelidis, I believe, is on this side. He's the president of our commission this year. And up front is Commissioner David Wolf, if you'll raise your hand. Thank you very much.
It's my great honor to present certificates from the city on behalf of the council and the mayor's office to the Department of Disability. Sharon, here.
Can we get a picture?
And the Department of Human Relations, Joe. Now my great honor to present a certificate and introduce a very, very special person. Eve Hill is head of the Western Law Center for Disability Rights, and she has been a dynamo in making good things happen for people with disabilities. And I don't know how many of you had a chance on Friday to read the op-ed piece on today, July 28, written by Eve Hill, where she goes into the subjects of freedom, equal opportunity, and dignity for people with disabilities so they can be with everybody else, proud of themselves, proud to be Angelenos, proud of their city, their country, and their families. So give a big hand to Eve Hill.
Thank you for that wonderful introduction and for having me here today. I want to talk a little bit about the history of the Americans with Disabilities Act, where we are and where we're going. History's a lot longer than many people think. The people with disabilities have been struggling for civil rights before the ADA, before 1973, when the Rehabilitation Act was enacted, before the 1970s, when the California laws were enacted. In fact, before the 1960s, when the other civil rights movements hit their peak. People with disabilities have been fighting for these things through protests, through rallies, through sit-ins, civil disobedience, and individual acts of defiance for decades. And their goals were, as the mayor said, freedom, equal opportunity, and dignity and respect in their society and their communities. As a result of those efforts, the ADA was passed 10 years ago, and that was a great achievement, the most comprehensive disability rights legislation in the world. And our society and our city has made great progress to meeting the goals, satisfying the goals of the disability rights movement. People with disabilities have more choices in where they'll live and with whom they'll live. People with disabilities have more choices about jobs, about education. And more people with disabilities are out here, working with and living with people without disabilities. That leads to dignity and respect and changes attitudes. The temptation, though, this week is to pat ourselves on the back, say we did a good job, wipe our hands and go back to our lives and forget about the disability rights movement. But we've barely begun, really. People with disabilities can't assume that they can go to any business any time and get their business done as non-disabled people can. Everyone here in this room will see a barrier today, a communication barrier, an attitude barrier, or a physical barrier. We need to keep our eyes open, notice those barriers, and do something about them. Equal opportunity. Schools are still segregating people with disabilities and giving them substandard education. As a result of that, 32% of people with disabilities don't graduate from high school. That's an appalling statistic. You can't succeed in this life if you can't graduate from high school. We should be doing more to deal with that. Employers are still acting on their prejudicial and simply wrong beliefs, dismissing applicants with disabilities out of hand, relying on scary stories about costs and absenteeism that simply aren't true. As a result of that, only 1/3 of people with disabilities have jobs, as opposed to 81% of people without disabilities. In this age of prosperity, we can't allow those statistics to continue. And prejudicial attitudes continue to be absolutely everywhere. Defendants in our cases raise overblown fears about safety risks. They raise negative assumptions about the intelligence of people with disabilities and their abilities. And they raise the scary stories about costs and absenteeism. As a result of this, 29% of people with disabilities live in poverty. That's in comparison to about 10% of people without disabilities living in poverty. Now, we can overcome these things. In time, we can change these attitudes, we can get rid of the barriers. And we're continuing to work very hard to get over these problems. But we're facing a serious attack, serious backlash, and I hope that LA will join me in responding to this backlash. In the media, how often do you see people with disabilities portrayed as real people? Very rarely. You see them portrayed as villains, as in the Wild, Wild West movie. You see them portrayed as the butt of jokes, as in Me, Myself, and Irene. You see them portrayed as pathetic victims. And when they are portrayed in our media, how often are they portrayed by actors with disabilities? Again, the answer is almost never. In the courts, we're being attacked. The Supreme Court recently restricted who's protected by the Americans with Disabilities Act. So now an employer can fire you because of your impairment and then argue that they can't be held responsible for that, for discrimination, because you take medication to control your impairment. This is not fair. This is a double bind that people with disabilities can't get out of. Right now, the California Supreme Court is considering adding those same restrictions to California law, which pre-existed the ADA and is broader than the ADA. Right now, several states have asked the U.S. Supreme Court to find the ADA unconstitutional as applied to the states. This would mean states could discriminate blatantly and face no punishment for that whatsoever. And recently, the federal legislature considered a bill, 3590, which would require people with disabilities who encounter discrimination to write a letter to the business to tell them everything that's wrong and wait 90 days for them to agree to fix it. If the business agrees to fix it, you can't sue them for the prior exclusion. Would we ever require a person of color to do this? If a person of color went to a restaurant and was told, "We don't serve your kind," would we require her to write a letter to the business and give them three months to say, "We won't do it again"? And if the business said, "Oh, sorry, we won't do it again," would we forbid her to sue for compensation for being excluded previously? Why do we think that discrimination against people with disabilities is any less repulsive? Why do we think it's just inconvenient? Basically, that law, that bill, would require people with disabilities to go to a restaurant three months before he wants to eat. Do we have to be that hungry? Basically, there's a lot of work to do. The Western Law Center is going to continue to do it. I hope Los Angeles, the city council, and the mayor will help, will work with us to accomplish the goals of the disability rights movement: freedom, equal opportunity, and dignity. Thank you.
Are we done? We're not done, because I just would like to announce before you all leave that... First of all, I want to say that I'm very proud to have in my district the Westside Center for Independent Living, one of the truly remarkable organizations in the fight for equal rights, equal access, equal opportunity for people who have disabilities or handicaps of one sort or another. And as requested by some of the people I've met at the Westside Center, I'm distributing today to the mayor and each of the council members the Spirit of ADA pledge for elected officials and policymakers. And I hope by the end of the day to have signed copies of this pledge from everybody. And those who aren't here today will be followed up later. And we are doing this because, partly in celebration of the anniversary, but we're really doing it because it's the right thing to do. So I just want you to know that the city council is here with you and look forward to working together to improve all the things that still need improvement. And thank you very much for coming and congratulations.
Madam President?
Mr. Fuhr.
Thank you, but before we conclude this, I just wanted to take a second to underscore a couple of points that have been made and to elaborate for a second. You know, those of you who have talked about the importance of the activists who are here today to the changes in policy that we've seen in the city have really told it like it is. There's no question, but that without your activism, we would not have a Department on Disability. I remember that fight. There's no question that without your activism, we wouldn't have already taken the steps necessary to adopt the curb-cut program that we have in the city. And there's no question that without your leadership, and I think that Catherine Curry-Williams is in the room, we wouldn't in September be inaugurating the first boundless playground where kids of all abilities can play together in the history of the city, which we'll be doing in Griffith Park on September 21st. So there's all kinds of... There are many accomplishments that are directly attributed to the leadership of people with disabilities and bringing to the attention of all of us the needs that are still unmet. And I wanted to say just one more thing, and that is, there are so many needs that remain unmet. And we have begun, through the programs I mentioned, to touch on them, but the fact is, even after the curb-cut program is undertaken, there'll still be tens, hundreds of thousands of curbs that aren't yet cut. Even with the creation of the boundless playground in Griffith Park and the soon-to-be-constructed one in Hanson Dam, there are still needs throughout all neighborhoods in this city we need to meet. So continue to work with us and recognize that your role has made such a striking difference already in the history of the city. Good luck.
Thank you. We have several more presentations. I'd like to start by introducing and welcoming the delegation from our sister city of Nagoya in Japan. We are joined by Mr. Yoto Tanucci, who's the deputy mayor, and four city council members, and a delegation of 25 city officials who do everything from manage the city assembly to manage international relations, supervise investigations, work with conventions, they do many, many things. If you would come over closer to the podium, I think we can see you better and the cameras can show our audience that you're here. And before you begin, let me just officially call the meeting to order, since we now have a quorum. This is, as I mentioned, a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council on Friday, July 28, year 2000. We meet on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10 o'clock, or pretty close to it. And we are being viewed on the city's cable television channel, Channel 35, and also available by council phone for those who would rather listen without having to watch. And now, maybe you should call the roll, Mr. Fuhr.
Ernst, Chick, Fuhr, Glanter, Goldberg, Hernandez, Holden, Miss Kossi, Pacheco, Padilla, Ridley, Thomas, Forch, Wax, Walters, Forough, 11 members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. Now, let's go back to Mr. Tanucci. First, let me say, sir, that we are very honored to have you here today. I have had the honor to visit the city of Nagoya, and I have to tell you, they have a truly wonderful aquarium. They also have some wonderful other things in the city as well. So we are very glad to have you and welcome you to the city of Los Angeles. Go ahead, Mr. Tanucci.
My name is Kunio Okachi. I am the vice-chairman of the...
Have you on the microphone as well, or we can't hear you?
My name is Kunio Okachi. I am the vice-chairman of the Assembly of Nagoya City. Thank you, I'm fine, yeah. And here today, our respectful president, Partham Garantor, and Los Angeles city councilmen, as well as the Los Angeles citizens, all of you, as the delegation of the Nagoya City Official Delegation representing them, I am very honored to be here to deliver my speech. We are here from Nagoya City, and we are here to deepen our friendship with your city and to join this glorious festivity of Nisei Week Festival. May I at this point introduce our Nagoya City's assembly people and also the official delegate, which consists of three, and then deputies hereof. Next to me is the assemblyman, Okumura Fumihiro. The next is the assemblyman, Haruyuki Sakurai. Likewise, the assemblyman, Takano, Hayashi. And here's Deputy Mayor, Yoto Tonouchi. Our friendship with your city have lasted 41 years. During these years, thanks to all of your efforts, our activities between these two cities have been very busy and very fruitful. We have built our friendship and relationship and continue to develop them for these years, and we are very, very proud of our two cities' efforts and achievements. I sincerely pray that we strengthen further our two cities' relationship as sister city. And I further pray that we will go, continue to deepen our relationship. If our visit here today should help this endeavor, all of us would be very, very grateful. In conclusion, I am very greatly honored to have this opportunity to be here today and would like to extend our thank you and appreciation and to be able to deliver this speech in this honorable chamber.
We also have a Los Angeles-Nagoya Sister City Exchange Student Program, and we have today Mr. Kitagawa and four students from Nagoya. Perhaps Mr. Nagoya would you, or Mr. Kitagawa would you, sorry, Mr. Kitagawa, would you like to introduce the students?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kyokaki Takawa. I am engaged in Nagoya International Center. I introduce you for my favorite student from Nagoya City.
My name is Maya Kozuka. I'm from, I'm...
Pick the microphone up a little bit. There you go.
My name is Maya Kozuka. I'm sophomore of Tokyo High School. Nice to meet you.
My name is Dubai. I'm sophomore of Meito High School. Nice to meet you.
My name is Aiko Fuji. I'm a sophomore of Sakura Dai High School. Nice to meet you.
My name is Masaki Yamoka. I'm freshman of Meiwa High School. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Teresa Bowen, and I went on the exchange program to Nagoya last year, and I'm from Narbon High School.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Ellen Mallon. I attend Grand Hills High School. I also went to Nagoya last year. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Felix Carp. I attend Palisades High School, and I was also on the trip to Nagoya last year. Thank you.
So all of you students in Los Angeles who want to go next year, now is the time to begin letting us know. Thank you all for coming. Enjoy your stay. We do have several more presentations, and the chair recognizes Mr. Fuhr for the next presentation, which means we have to ask the Nagoya delegations to move over just a little bit to the side.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I get to make a very special presentation this morning, and I'd like to ask Judge Mike Tynan, James Stillwell, and their team to come forward, please. The whole group. Colleagues, we know that the criminal justice system does some things well and is still learning how to do other things very effectively. One area in which criminal justice has typically not succeeded very much is in rehabilitating people and reintegrating people who've offended, typically committing low-grade offenses, back into society in a very productive way, recognizing how much each person has to offer if we can only get at who they really are and get rid of things like their addictions that have caused them serious problems. One example of the type of reform that is happening right now in our criminal justice system is the Drug Court Program. Drug Court provides a treatment alternative to prosecution for nonviolent felony offenders. There's a non-adversarial courtroom proceeding that ensues. The judge heads a team of court officers, staff, and treatment counselors, all working with one goal: to support the recovery of the participants. And within the Drug Court system, there's a new program, the Sentenced Offender Drug Court Program. It's an experiment. It's the first of its kind in the country. It's designed for nonviolent drug offenders who otherwise would be facing state prison. Under close supervision of the court, the probation department, and drug counseling professionals, these participants go through an intensive recovery process. It lasts 18 months, and through arduous work, we have many of the graduates with us today. This is an extraordinary thing, and it recognizes how our court system can change to adapt to the needs of a society that has to do better with people who commit these offenses than simply assuming that they have nothing else to contribute. With me this, this morning, among others, is Judge Mike Tynan, who I'd like to come forward. Judge Tynan not only was the founder of the Drug Court Program, but he has been the guiding force in this new experimental program. I was really fortunate to be able to attend their first-ever graduation, and Judge Tynan, with great professionalism and emotion that pervaded the room, headed this graduation ceremony for folks who really were grateful at the end of the day for what they've been able to achieve in concert with the court system. And Judge Tynan, I know this was not anticipated to be in the cards, but I wanted you to be able to receive this certificate of commendation from all of us here, because, Judge, you have been a remarkable force in innovation in our court system.
Thank you, Michael. I appreciate it. Thank you.
We also have executive director of the Impact Drug and Alcohol Treatment Center, James Stillwell, with us. And we have a certificate for you as well this morning. I know that the graduates of the program are really in debt to both of you for your leadership and for the spirit of innovation you have brought, and really committing yourselves to the battle against addiction. We also have some graduates who are with us, and I think not all of them are with us this morning, but some are. Victor Michel is not here. He's working today, which is a very good thing. Is Marilyn Green here this morning? These folks are all on the way back to a very meaningful role in our community. Larry Stevenson. Wesley Williams. Stephen Gold couldn't be here. Judge, did you want to say a word or two?
I just want to, I just want to thank you, Councilman Fuhr. Your support has been invaluable. We will keep fighting this fight. These people are deserving of every bit of honor and credit they can get. They fought a tremendous fight, and they will continue to fight this fight for the rest of their lives. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you, Judge Tynan and your team. I have one more presentation. I just want to say regarding the presentation that just concluded, these are folks who have fought their way back, and even the people who couldn't be here, all couldn't be here only because they are productively pursuing their careers.
Mr. Hernandez would like to be recognized.
Mr. Fuhr, I'm glad you made the presentation today, and I want to recognize the effort of each and every graduate. It's one day at a time, but at the same time, thank the judge for being here. The reason I pressed my button was to basically remind my colleagues that it was about two years ago that we were able to participate for the first time financially by setting aside $50,000 from the Criminal Justice Block grant for purposes of Drug Court. Now, I kind of say that because Los Angeles municipality with its 3.5 million people needs to understand that this system is working, and we should be participating in it more so. And some of the limitations the system has is simply financial. And I kind of wanted to bring that up because the more the city can work with the county in regards to making this system continue to work, I think the more graduates like this we'll see. And the reality is, having Angelenos who are hopeless become very hopeful, I think is a tremendous difference. And I just wanted to make that comment because I think as a city, the city attorney's office, and we work closely with the mayor's office on the Criminal Justice Block grant and setting aside that money, and the council very much supported it, but I didn't want it to be a one-time thing.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. I have one more. Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask the Hollywood Beautification Team, Team, to come forward now. And there went our audience here, all coming up here. Madam President, colleagues, many of us have had the pleasure of working with the Hollywood Beautification Team. We wanted to provide special recognition to them this morning, not merely for the work that many of you are familiar with, which is the graffiti abatement program work and the tree planting work. But the Hollywood Beautification Team has been embarked in a partnership with schools throughout the city of Los Angeles, the product of which is the creation of murals, more than 200 murals, that are taking otherwise blighted parts of school campuses and transforming them into things of special beauty. I think recognizing the power of the creative force here and that art can play a very constructive role on school campuses in giving people a deeper sense of appreciation of their environment and of their own potential at the same time. So Sharon, Rupert, Neil Demonte, Ernesto Fabian, and Roland Miller, all of you deserve special credit. We all really enjoy working with Sharon Romano and her team, and this is yet another aspect of their program that really is contributing in a remarkable way to making Los Angeles a much more beautiful place. Sharon and team, congratulations and thank you from all of us.
We're very fortunate, HBT, to have such a fantastic mural crew, and they spend their days teaching and working with thousands of kids at LAUSD, and it's been a very rewarding experience. We do this in partnership with LAUSD MNO, and we'd like to thank the members of the council and the mayor for all the support that you've given us for all our efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fuhr.
Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Pacheco for a presentation, or two presentations.
Good morning, Madam President and colleagues. This morning, I'm really excited to bring up some individuals who have been strong individuals in the Eagle Rock community. So I want to bring up first a young man by the name of Ruben John Williams. So Ruben, come on up. Ruben is an Eagle Rock High School athlete who's doing really well in his sport and has done a good job in school. Currently, he maintains a 3.65 GPA. He is the first, he is the first athlete in Eagle Rock history to be a state track champion. He is the 1999 and 2000 CIF state champion in shot put, right? He has been chosen the most valuable player of the year for Eagle Rock High School. He is one of the top shot putters and hammer throwers in the country. Obviously, he'll be graduating from Eagle Rock this year, class 2000. He has competed in the Simplot Games in Pocatello, Idaho, the Nike Indoor Classics in Bloomington, Indiana, the Flojo Memorial in Citrus College, the U.S. Track and Field Junior National Championships at the University of Northern Texas, and at California State University Track Meet in Sacramento, California. Not only are we recognizing Ruben for his accomplishments on the field, but for me personally, the most important thing that I can tell Ruben is that he made the best choice when he decided to go to the University of California at Berkeley, my alma mater, and so, on behalf of...
He could have gone to Michigan, though.
But he was smart. On behalf of Council District 14, it gives me great pleasure to commend you for achieving the 1999 and 2000 CIF state championship title and for being named the most valuable player for the year 2000 at Eagle Rock High School. Your dedication, hard work is truly worthy of praise and recognition. Best wishes in all your future endeavors. Ruben, congratulations.
I'd just like to say thank you to, first of all, the Councilman Pacheco, and just, I'd like to send a big thanks to the community of Eagle Rock and everybody that's played an important role in getting me to where I am today. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Also, today, we are, it's a bittersweet day, any time that the community loses such a strong individual as the individual I'm going to bring up. So let me bring up Ladell Stapp. Ladell started his business in Eagle Rock 45 years ago, Stapp's Automotive. He moved to Eagle Rock and started his family over 40 years ago. He has two sons and one daughter. Ladell's been involved in the Northeast YMCA. He's been a Cub Scout Master for Troop Number 188, Assistant Scout Master for Troop Number 188. He's been the president of the Eagle Rock Kiwanis. He's been on the Board of Directors for the Eagle Rock Chamber of Commerce. He is a member of Bland Business Law Enforcement for Northeast Division. Ladell is always there for our community events. He's always there, not only with his personal time, but he's one of our business contributors for our personal events. He's devoted to the Eagle Rock community and helping the neighbors and the children. Ladell always makes himself available. Ladell is here with, I believe, his family and some other individuals from Eagle Rock. But Ladell, on behalf of Council District 14, it gives me great pleasure to congratulate you on the occasion of your retirement, after 45 years of dedicated service to the Eagle Rock community. I commend you for your commitment to the Eagle Rock Chamber of Commerce, Bland, Kiwanis, and the Boy Scouts of America, Troop 188. Congratulations. Best wishes in all your endeavors, Ladell. Obviously, we are going to miss you in terms of what you've given us in Eagle Rock. Thank you so much.
I'd like to just take a moment. I feel real honored to be here today, and thank you very much, Madam President, for the opportunity to be in here and the council members and Mr. Pacheco. I'm, I'm not going to leave Eagle Rock. I love LA and I love Eagle Rock, so I'm going to do all I can to help the community in the city of Los Angeles the best I can. Also, I probably wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for my wife, Lonnie, of my one and only wife of 43 years, it is, I think. This is Lonnie. I have my granddaughter Sarah, and some friends, Dean and Lucy Spurgeon, and Eleanor Duffy helped come here to celebrate it. So thank you very much for this great honor.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Madam President and colleagues.
Thank you. All right, I think we're ready to begin today's agenda by seeing what has to be continued.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, let's do that first. The minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Those are approved.
Item number nine, a request from Councilmember Walters, continue that matter until August 2nd.
Is there any objection to continuing item nine to August 2nd, which is when all the other commission appointments will be before us?
Item number 11...
None, it's continued. Go ahead.
Request that matter be continued by Councilmember Pacheco to August 1st.
Okay, that's continued to August 1st.
Item number 20, request that matter by Councilmember Walters be continued till September 12th.
Any problem with that? That's continued.
Item number 36, a request by Mr. Holden that that matter be continued until August 4th. Item 36.
Okay, also approved. Next.
From the regular agenda, items number 1 through 8 are items for which public hearings have been noticed.
All right, we have cards, we have, well, we did have, we have a card from Mr. Belvin, who wants, Belvin or Belrin, wants to be heard, Belvin, on items 3 and 4. Mr. Belvin.
Members of the council, my name is Charles Belvin, and I wish to comment on items 3 and 4, which have to do with lighting districts in the community subdivision of Cary Ranch, Silmar. And my only comment is that the homeowners association... All right, I think we're ready to begin today's agenda by seeing what has to be continued.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, let's do that first. The minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Those are approved.
Item number nine, a request from Councilmember Walters, continue that matter until August 2nd.
Is there any objection to continuing item nine to August 2nd, which is when all the other commission appointments will be before us?
Item number 11--
None, it's continued. Go ahead.
Request that matter be continued by Councilmember Pacheco to August 1st.
Okay, that's continued to August 1st.
Item number 20, request that matter by Councilmember Walters be continued till September 12th.
Any problem with that? That's continued.
Item number 36, a request by Mr. Holden that that matter be continued until August 4th. Item 36.
Okay, also approved. Next.
On the regular agenda, items number 1 through 8 are items for which public hearings have been noticed.
All right, we have cards, we have, well, we did have, we have a card from Mr. Belvin, who wants, Belvin or Belrin, wants to be heard, Belvin, on items 3 and 4. Mr. Belvin.
Members of the council, my name is Charles Belvin, and I wish to comment on items 3 and 4, which have to do with lighting districts in the community subdivision of Carey Ranch, Silmar. And my only comment is that the homeowners' association comprising 252 homes in this subdivision was under the impression that the lighting assessments essentially would be equal for all lots in the subdivision. When we actually received the ballots, however, and the assessments, we discovered substantial inequities. Many homes pay much more than other homes, other homes pay less. And the Proposition 218 process prevents us really from being able to give constructive feedback to the Bureau of Lighting, and the Bureau of Lighting's hands are tied in being able to make a more equitable assessment. And so we're in a catch-22 process. I guess my comment would be that the process, we would recommend be improved in the case of common interest developments, such as the Carey Ranch, so that the homeowners affected be able to give some constructive feedback before final ballots are sent out. As it is, we just have to vote it up or down, take it or leave it, without the opportunity to provide constructive feedback. In the future, if such common interest developments could be investigated ahead of time, I would think that would be a fairer thing to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Belvin. I have no other cards from the public on items 1 through 8. So we're going to close the public hearing on those items. Councilmembers, any specials 1 through 8? If not, open the roll. No, we're not doing that. We're going to continue. Motion required to continue the hearings and ordinances, it says here.
Go ahead and open the roll and take a vote, then we'll continue.
All right, first, let's open the roll and take a vote. Thank you. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, and now we're going to--
So items number 1 through 4, the hearings and ordinances will be continued to August 18th.
To August 18th, right. And items 5 through 8 are adopted.
Correct.
Good. Moving right along.
Items number 10 through 19 on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have been held. Item number 11 has been acted on.
We just continued item number 11.
Correct.
And item number 9. Right.
So it's now 10 through 19 except 11.
We do have somebody who wants to be heard on item 16, if it's not going to go on consent. So let's find out first if anybody, any council members have any specials on items 10 through 19. Seeing-- I just wanted to move 14B and 15A, because there are two choices on those. Right, right. Okay, 14B and 15A are before us. Any discussion on those? Open the roll on 10 through 19, with the exception of 11, 14B and 15A. I'm sorry, which one? 14? All right. Two committee reports, and 15. Well, that's why Ms. Goldberg just made a motion--
Yeah, I've just been informed that Councilman Fuer, who's in the back, had wanted to speak on the Budget and Finance Committee report.
All right, okay, so we'll call both 14 and 15 special. Okay, let's try opening the roll on 10 through 19, with the exception of 11, 14, and 15. Oops. Yes, which--
No, after the vote, I want to ask for one to go forthwith.
Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, those are adopted.
Could 18 go forthwith?
18 forthwith. 16 also forthwith. 16 forthwith. Okay, next item.
Items number 21 through 35 on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have not been held.
21 through, sorry, say again.
35.
35, okay. Is there anybody in the audience who wants to be heard on items 21 through 35? Seeing none, the public hearings are closed. Any specials? 21 through 34 called special by Mr. Wax. Anybody else? Any more specials? Open the roll on 21 through 35, with the exception of 34, right? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. We're doing very well here. Next item.
On the regular agenda, items 37 and 38 are closed session items. You wish to hold those on the desk.
Hold those on the desk.
So now's the time for item number 14 called special by Councilmember Miskowski.
All right, Cindy, item 14. Push the speaker button, please.
Can we defer that? Mr. Fuer, I was understanding he wanted to talk on that item.
Did you want to call 14 special?
Yeah.
Okay, well, Ms. Goldberg already made a motion, so why don't you go first, and then we'll have-- But would you hit the speaker button?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, for the sake of clarity, is the CIO here on this item, or OARS, excuse I just called special to be sure that we're on the same page here. Now, the--
Mr. Fuer, just let me, while you were out of the room, Ms. Goldberg moved 14B.
Moved the Personnel Committee report, right. And the distinction between the two reports is Personnel provides this appropriation from the UB of a couple hundred thousand dollars, correct?
Right, but we amended our recommendation subsequent to the Personnel Committee meeting because there's enough money in the general city purpose account right now, so we would not need the appropriation at this time.
Right, this is, and so I would actually, Ms. Goldberg, move Budget and Finance. The same result programmatically occurs, and there's some savings there.
I thought they needed money, which is why I moved--
I understood, yeah. That's why I called special.
I don't need the money, I don't want to spend it.
Okay. Ms. Glantro, I think Ms. Goldberg is withdrawing her motion and joining in Budget and Finance. So Budget and Finance is the motion.
All right, so that's 14A, right? Budget and Finance?
Right, yes.
Okay, anybody else? Hearing none, open the roll on 14A. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That's approved. Okay, item 15, also called special by Mr. Fuer.
Yeah, I just, again, is there, who's here on 15 from OARS? What if any distinction is there between the reports of Personnel and Budget?
No, I just wanted to be sure I understand. Is there any meaningful distinction between the two?
I'm not aware of any.
Okay, that's fine. All right, that's all.
I moved your recommendation.
I know, I just wanted to be sure--
All right, so the one that's before us is 15A, which is Budget and Finance. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes, 1 no.
Whoops. Okay, that's approved. Next item.
Item number 34 called special by Councilmember Wax.
Mr. Wax, would you push the speaker button, please?
I just wanted to know if in addition to the phones, they were going to provide the service with it, or do we have to pay for the phone bill?
And Mr. Martinez is going to answer your question.
Frank Martinez, DNC Coordinator's Office. Yes, they're providing the airtime as well.
Great.
Well, isn't that nice? In that case, would you like to move approval?
I move approval.
All right, open the roll on item 34. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That's approved. All right, next are the closed session items, are they not?
Do you want to do the special?
Let's do the special first, and do we have to do our airport thing again?
We have people here that I think we need to hear from.
All right, let's do the airport thing. Now, wait a minute, what have we got here? Hold on.
Yeah, we're close.
All right, let's do the special, let's do yours, and then we'll do the special meeting. Jackie, go ahead.
Oh, I'd like to move to reconsider the airport permit vote that we took on Wednesday.
Operating permits.
Operating permits on Wednesday.
All right, open the roll on reconsideration. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, the item is reconsidered, and Ms. Goldberg?
I believe we have people here from the Department of World Airports and also from Northwest Airlines, and I'd ask that they'd come to the center tables.
I think we're going to need them. Step this way.
Yeah, so it makes no difference.
Maybe we could hear the report before I--
Mr. Lobner, you're on.
Yes, what is the will of the council at this point?
We'd like to hear where we are.
Perhaps we should ask Northwest Airlines where the status is on--
That's fine. Okay, let's do that.
--their commitments at the last board meeting.
As of this time, we have--
Excuse me, we need your name for the tape, please.
I'm sorry, Alan Steinbrucker, on behalf of Northwest Airlines. At this time, we have 20, a group of 23 people who have started training. We expect that 13 of those will be issued their badges today and will receive their uniforms tomorrow, and we expect that they will start their employment on Monday. The remaining 10, we expect, will complete that process in the next couple of days. There's a second group of 36 employees who are in the process of being employed and going through the background checks, and we expect that those people will begin their training either Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday of next week.
All right, and when will they begin? When will they begin?
That's up to 50-something, right?
That's 59 out of 147. When will they be, that last 36, when will they be paid by?
Our proposal was that they would start being paid even if the background checks are not complete, as of next Friday, August 4th, assuming that they pass the background checks and are therefore employed. But they're, assuming that they pass the background checks and are employed, they would start being paid as of Friday, August 4th.
And why would it be August 4th when they're going to start training Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday?
I'm sorry, it's actually the earlier of the day that they start their training or August 4th.
All right, so could we get a guarantee that they would be on the payroll by August the 2nd for that 59?
I believe I could, I certainly will have to talk to my Northwest Aviation Safeguards--
See, 2 days to them is not much, but 2 days to people who've been out of work for 5 and 1/2 weeks is quite a bit.
If that can resolve this problem, I'm sure I can get that agreement.
Okay, that's fine. And now we have 88 others. What happens with them?
The 88 others, our proposal is this, we have not heard from all of them, we have heard from some of them. Let me get my notes, just one second.
Certainly. This is not a test.
Our proposal as to that remaining group would be that those eligible people who apply to Aviation Safeguards by next Friday, even by telephone, and who bring in the necessary documentation in order to be able to do their background checks within one week of that first contact, will be offered employment at Terminal 2 upon completion of a satisfactory background check, drug test, whatever else is required, and will be paid beginning not later than one week after they bring in all their necessary documentation. So the incentive for them is to bring in their documentation as quickly as possible because they will start being paid no later than one week later.
So if they brought their documentation in today before the end of the workday, they would be on the payroll by next Friday?
Yes, once they pass the background check and the drug test.
I understand that, but the date would be next Friday, even if it took longer for the background check to take place?
Yes, because that would incentivize Aviation Safeguards to complete the process.
Right, so they would go retroactive to a week from today if in fact they did pass the background check.
Yes.
And the last question has to do with the five former Argon Bright employees who are now working at other terminals and had seniority at Terminal 2.
I understand. Aviation Safeguards has taken the position that those people who are presently employed by other service contractors at the airport would not be in the eligible pool.
Because?
Because their interpretation is that the ordinance would not cover those people, given the fact that they are employed and that, as a practical matter, the result of bringing those people back would be to terminate other people who are employed at the airport and who are union members as well.
Well, I have to tell you that our ordinance does not say that. Our ordinance says that but for the contract change, they'd still be working at Terminal 2, and that they had seniority at Terminal 2, whereas in their new locations, they have no seniority. And this, as you well know, is a volatile industry in terms of numbers going up and numbers going down. It makes it more likely that they'd get laid off at their current location. And I would have to say, Madam Chair and President of the council and members, that I think that we'll probably have to go ahead, but I'm not really overjoyed with what I have seen in the way of aviation services compliance with our ordinance. Nonetheless, I think that there has been substantial movement, but I would hate to have anyone hearing this or observing this think that this would be a precedent in the future, because in the future, I hope that what we will do is take swift and immediate action and not get into this position that we're in now. I hope the Airport Department of Airports understands that, because this is not, as you've been watching the unanimous votes of this council moving this day by day, this is not a small issue for us, and it is not just about me. This is about a council that spent a lot of time and effort trying to say that when contracts change, that people should not, who are service workers, automatically just lose their jobs. And we will now, I'm sure, I will bet you that we will get nothing like the number of people back that were working there, because people can't wait 5 and 1/2 weeks to find out whether they have employment. And that was the whole purpose of worker retention, and I have to say to you that I am very disappointed that we haven't done better at this, but I am going to move that we adopt the-- Operating-- Operating-- And to direct or request that the Department of Airports follow up closely to make sure that that whole first 59 are on the payroll as of Wednesday. Period. No ifs, ands, or buts. If they don't pass the background, that's, of course, a different story, but they're on the payroll and that for the rest of the group, that we do some seriously, serious monitoring to make sure that from one week from the day that they bring their documentation in, that they are on the payroll as well, no matter how long it takes for aviation services supposedly to go through background checks on employees who were already working there, which is part of my frustration. So I will move that we-- Right, we do have five, six, five people who've asked to speak on this item.
I think we should hear them.
And it's up to the council. Do you want to hear from them?
I'll move a 5-minute hearing.
So we'll ask them to be brief. Let me just tell you, because it isn't really just Ms. Goldberg, she had to fight to the head of the line to be the person to move the reconsideration each day, and because of her leadership on worker retention ordinance, everybody said, okay, you can do it. But there really was a contest here, and the entire council does take this very seriously. We do have five people who want to be heard. I'm going to call them just in the order that I have the cards. Dionysia Robinson, Tommy Wu, Norma Torres, this one, I'm sorry, I can't read, looks like Erica somebody, and Mary Ann Hoensteen. And pull the mic to wherever it's comfortable for you. Go ahead.
Okay, if you wouldn't mind, I would like to start. My name's Mary Ann Hoensteen. I'm the organizing director at SEIU Local 1877, and I do want to give a little bit of information to the council today about what the process that the workers have gone through over the past week or so, just to elaborate on a couple of the points. As was mentioned, 23 employees began training yesterday and today. They were told that that training would be unpaid. They were told again last night that the training would be unpaid. It was an eight-hour training, and that would be a violation of the California Labor Law, so we would also like to guarantee that that training will be paid in full. In terms of the other 36 employees, we would also like some sort of guarantee that they will actually be paid no later than August the 2nd. Northwest Airlines has made some effort this week to get Aviation Safeguard to move on certain issues about when training would start and when people would be paid, and they've been somewhat unsuccessful in making that actually happen. And so we were told, for example, that everyone would be trained as of today, we were told that everyone would be trained as of Monday, and neither of those things has happened, so we would like to get a guarantee on that. And then also, on the issue of the five Argon Bright employees that are currently working that were transferred somewhere during this 5 and 1/2 week process, one of the reasons that we would like those employees to be able to come back to Terminal 2 is because they have the right to come back to Terminal 2. And the other reason is that there are a number of employees being left out of this process, those with less than a year seniority, and we would like to be able to have the opportunity to move some of them over to the other Argon Bright terminals if it was possible. I just want to also be clear that Aviation Safeguard made absolutely no attempt over the past 10 days to contact the employees to bring them back to work, and that if there is going to be a deadline of people coming in by August the 4th, then Aviation Safeguard should be required to call every single employee for whom they have a phone number and get them to understand that they need to come in by next Friday. I would just wanted to have a couple of the employees also speak quickly. And I will pass the report around to the council with this information.
Good morning. My name is Dionysia Robinson, and this morning I'd just like to say that Aviation Safeguard and Northwest have showed total disregard to any requests that they have received. have received, they're taking their time, we don't have time on our side, we have bills to pay and children to take care of, and we would like to continue to do what we've been doing, taking care of our children, unfortunately, they're making it very difficult. They've had all our information for more than a month. It took two days for Argon Bright to hire me, I've lived in the same place for ten years, and I have done two jobs in the past ten years, that doesn't take a lot of time to find out that information, you need to do what you have to do, do it as soon as possible because we'd like to go to work. We've had enough time off work, five weeks is a lot of time, we have bills to pay, thank you.
Good morning, my name is Norma Torres, and I'm here to let you know that I'm very frustrated because I don't have no money to pay my bills, I eat a little too much, so I'm hungry, and all I need is go back to work. And I think aviation is taking a little too long to hire us because I'm living in my apartment for fifteen years, and I also have two jobs that I only have to check, and when I went to Argon Bright, they only took me one day to hire me. And they also, when they say one day, they want to get to us, like say, for example, Friday, they don't even get in touch to us until three days later, as soon as they get out from here, they forget about us, so that's not fair, so I need all your support, please, thank you.
My name is Tommy Wu, I just paid all my bills the month of July, now my finances back, almost depleted now, and now I may have to go to my credit cards, pay Peter to Paul or Paul to Peter now. And when I was with Argon Bright, when they hired me, checked my background, I only took them about a week, and after that, I was hired after that. And I believe Aviation Safeguard is not doing a very good job, I've been waiting a very long time, thank you.
My name is Erica Zucker, I'm the Policy Director at LA Alliance for a New Economy, and I'll be very brief because Councilmember Goldberg already said more eloquently than I could what I was planning to say this morning about worker retention applying to every single one of the workers at Terminal 2 whose contract was terminated, but it's more than the five Argon Bright workers, there is up to twelve workers who work for ITS and Huntley, who, some of whom may be working at other terminals. Some workers were retained by Huntley for the week because their contract was originally supposed to be terminated on June 30th, and they were actually terminated on June 23rd, so Huntley moved them over to Terminal 1 till June 30th, but some of those workers do not have jobs, so I just want the council and the commission and Northwest Airlines and Aviation to be aware that it's not just the Argon Bright workers, there are workers for Huntley and ITS that were also affected by this and are, should be covered by this agreement as well.
Thank you, that's all the speakers we have, and so we're back to the council, Ms. Goldberg.
Yes, I'd like to make my, all the things that have been agreed to here into one motion. So let me formally say that what I am moving is that we approve the operating permits at all terminals at LAX. That we direct that Northwest Airlines see to it that aviation services immediately make efforts to notify everybody by phone who has not been notified. That's the eighty-eight, that they need to bring documentation in and what that documentation is and of all the deadlines that are being set. That's number one. Number two, that the first group that I believe is either fifty-nine or sixty-one, but whatever that first group is, that they be on the payroll no later than August the 2nd, period. Number three, that for the remaining eighty-eight, that they be on the payroll no later than one week from the date they bring in the documents required. And number four, that the Department of Airports monitor closely this agreement for compliance and take whatever action is necessary as to the lease of Northwest Airlines to guarantee compliance with this agreement.
Do you want to hear Northwest's response to any of that before we vote?
I think you've already agreed to all of it, so.
I believe we have.
Okay, so we're clear.
So if I can get a second, we can be dispensed with this.
Surely somebody wants to second this motion.
Mr. Fuhrer seconds the motion. Everybody's talking, but Mr. Fuhrer's second.
Yes, okay, we got him, get in line, guys. All right, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That's unanimously approved. Mr. Lobner, I think it would be useful if you would not only undertake a monitoring program out there, but if you would actually report back to the council about once a month until we have this thing resolved, just on the status of all these employees.
We'll do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Colleagues, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have closed, we have closed session items, we have public comment, and we also have a special meeting, which I hope will be quick, so let's recess the regular meeting and take up the special meeting agenda at this time, Mr. Clerk, call the roll.
Bertrand Chek, Furyk Lantner, Goldberg Hernandez holding, Ms. Kozak, Pacheco Padilla, Ridley Thomas, Forin Schwax Walters, four of our thirteen members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. Okay, we have two items on this agenda, I have no cards on any of them, so we will formally open and close the public hearings. And Mr. Savornich, you have to get closer to your desk, you want to be heard with respect to, okay, we have, we have two items. Go ahead, Mr. Savornich.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. This item, which was a communication from the chair, and I apologize, Madam President, for not being able to be at the meeting, authorizes the --
It's okay, I kept your chair warm.
Thank you. Authorizes the Board of Harbor Commissioners to borrow from the Department of Boating and Waterways of the State of California an amount not to exceed eleven million eight hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars to design, construct, operate, and maintain certain small craft harbor boating-related improvements designated by the Harbor Department as the Phase II of the Cabrillo Marina. I remember it wasn't too long ago, prior to my tenure on the city council, where this project was delayed indefinitely by the Harbor Department and the construction of a related fire station put on hold on the main channel of the port. Eventually, the fire station was constructed on the main channel of the port, the Phase II of the Cabrillo Marina finally coming, starting to come before us today. But what has been omitted is addressing the fireboat station in proximity to the Cabrillo Marina. Currently, the Harbor Department and the CAO's office, now known as OARS, are in the midst of a fire services study for the Port of Los Angeles. In addition, there is presently, as we sit here, a temporary boat station, Station 110, which is a fireboat station, in proximity of the Cabrillo Marina, which has never been built out as a full fire station. As such, Madam President, what I would like to do is amend the report to the following, also contingent upon, on two things. Number one, to authorize the Board of Harbor Commissioners to borrow an amount not to exceed thirteen million eight hundred and sixty-six dollars, the other two million dollars that they could borrow be authorized by the council provided that the Fire Department accepts and approves the findings of the fire services study, which is going to be completed within the next sixty days or so, and also that this fund, the fund where this money is coming from the state, can be used for the purpose of the fire station. And what I would like to do is amend that and request that this portion come back for a status report to both the Commerce Committee and the Public Safety Committee when the fire services study is completed and when the Fire Department, excuse me, when the Harbor Department finds out whether or not that money can be used for the fireboat station. And so I would like to amend this report to reflect that, and if I could have a courtesy second, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, I do have a question for probably the city attorney, in view of the fact that what we're doing is conferring, concurring with a Board of Harbor Commissioners resolution, can we do that in the absence of commission action? I just want to find out, I don't want us to, I mean, we want to make sure that we don't do something that gets us in trouble so that they're not authorized to borrow the eleven million eight hundred thousand.
Yes, Ray Bender from the city attorney's office, yes, the board has, or rather, the council has that ability, under the city council authority and the charter authority, since the council is the authorizing agency.
All right.
Secondly, I will in any event advise the board of the action, and if any board member wants to discuss it for any reason, they'll have that ability.
Well, I believe Mr. Savornich's motion doesn't require them to borrow that extra two million, it simply authorizes it should the, should the fire, if the Fire Department concurs with the fire services study findings, then you will already have it authorized if you need to borrow two million more.
Yes.
Now, the other question is, can boating and waterways money be used for?
Exactly, and that's what the councilman has asked me to check on, they can authorize money for small craft marinas, it's not clear to me that this will fall into it, but we certainly will check with them to find out and report back to both the board and to the two committees that the council is amending the motion to report back to.
All right, okay. Moved by Mr. Savornich, seconded by Ms. Mizakowski, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved.
Thank you so much.
With all those caveats.
A note that this is subject to the mayor's approval.
Yes, subject to the mayor's approval, I think most of what we do is subject to the mayor's approval. Okay, that's item one, now item two.
Item number two is a closed session item, did you wish to combine that with the other two closed session items?
Yes, because we need some, there's some other things we need to do before we do that, so we'll now recess the special meeting, go back into the regular meeting, and as far as I know, the only things left are public comment and the closed session item. We have several people who want to be heard on the closed session item, but since we're going to, in the interest of trying to maintain something like continuity here, let's first go to the public comment that has nothing to do with item thirty-eight, and then we'll hear from those who want to speak on item thirty-eight, and then we'll go into closed session. So we'll be, now is the time for public comment, and I have not, I have an organization, not a person, the Van Nuys TNI Committee.
Good morning, Madam President, council members, I'm Deborah Duval, I'm chair of the Van Nuys TNI Youth and Recreation Partnership, and I'm here with several of our other members today. First of all, Candido Maras, who is our driving force at the Van Nuys TNI, Nick Buckroff, who's the director of the Van Nuys Recreation Center, and Jose Sandoval, also at Van Nuys Recreation Center, commissioner of our youth soccer league, and Cindy Semudio, who is a member of the Delano Park Park Advisory Board and now our Van Nuys TNI, and also a two-time Golden Glove Super Heavyweight Champ. And we've come today to thank the council, especially councilmember Cindy Mizakowski and Mayor Richard Riden, for bringing the TNI funds to our community where we have improved the quality of life and opportunities for our youth. Some of our successful programs in the youth partnership include the Van Nuys Middle School Delano Park After School Friday Night Program, serving over fifty at-risk youths. We have day camp and preschool scholarships available at Van Nuys Recreation Center, LA Kids and Day Camp available at Delano Park. We've had HIV education programs, Junior Lakers Basketball Leagues, a Spring Carnival fundraiser, a mural project that's in the works right now, and our most successful program has been our soccer league, which is now in its third season. We particularly would like to express our appreciation of Cindy Mizakowski's tireless efforts in getting the funds for the much-needed building at Delano Park. Delano Park has a very small, very old building. Yesterday morning, there were fifty children there for a day camp program for preschool, and a can opener would have been handy to fit them all into the building. This building will enable Delano Park to provide classes and programs to the children, the youth, and the families of the TNI, so that they will be able to have better quality of life, better opportunities, and will enable us to be even prouder of our area. The Delano Park Park Advisory Board has just started the Delano Park Community Building Fund to show the community's commitment to this building, and we hope that if the Department of Recreation and Parks shows even half the support and dedication of Cindy Mizakowski, we can get this building up very soon. Today, I'd like to have Nick Buckroff present a little token of our appreciation and representation of our soccer league.
Pull a mic, there you go.
Good morning, Madam President and council members, my name is Nick Buckroff, I'm the director at Van Nuys Recreation Center, and I'd like to tell you a little bit about the TNI program. In two years, we've had, since its inception, we have served up to fifteen hundred participants, ages five to fifteen. Of the, of the fifteen hundred participants, one-third or five hundred have been girls, so we've been raising the bar. The impact with the Van Nuys and Delano Parks is that we've really impacted with more parents coming to the center, we have volunteers now coaching, helping with refreshments, many members joining the Park Advisory Board, and both parks have really become very family-oriented, so indeed, we've been very busy. And I know you've entered, we've had our committee introduced, and at this time, at this time, we'd like to make our presentation to our councilwoman, Cindy Mizakowski. We were very proud, last June 17th, we conducted opening day, and we'd like to make the presentation of these soccer players and family participants, and make this presentation to Cindy Mizakowski, 11th District. On behalf of the Valley District, I'm glad to be here and make this presentation, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you for taking the trouble to come in. I do have one more person who wants to be heard from a different group, Mr. Jaron, I think it is, from Temple and Bodry.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First of all, this is the first time I've been up here, so I'm a little bit nervous. I'd like to address the issue on the policing community of my neighborhood I live in, and there seem to be a few problems in that area with addressing the issues and also trying to work with the police officers in that area. Recently, my son's vehicle was told away, and I tried to communicate with the police in a rightful way. It seemed that I couldn't be able to direct any communication with the officer, and most likely, everybody never wants to argue with the officer because we don't get any place, but I try to use every effort in order to direct that the vehicles that are taking in those areas in some way are not rightful, what they're doing. A lot of people in the community have been complaining about the issue and has addressing it to me, I don't know how to address the issues in a very rightful way, but I gather that I'd like to address it to my councilman because this is what everyone tells me, address the issues to our councilman. So I now would like to address that to Mr. Hernandez. So I now would like to address that to Mr. Hernandez. Mr. Hernandez, I just want to see how your office and yourself can be able to communicate with us. We don't have the rightful people that can, to represent us in a rightful way. There isn't anyone that's listening to anything that we say. So I just, in some, one way or another, in order to understand the system of things and the things away, because I do like to take the rightful way of doing things and be able to work my way as a citizen now and be able to take that part. But, and according to these effects, sometimes we start feeling the negative of things because of the changes or whatsoever that has to take place in our community. And the only thing that I'd be able to say is that if you can be able to communicate with us in our community and be able to direct yourself down there so that the people in the area could start saying, you know, "Mr. Hernandez is here now," and we could be able to address the issues that's affecting the community and whatsoever. I'm not saying there's any bad communication between Rampart Division or between our community, but there's a need for somebody to address those, those, those problems in the, in the area. And, and so I'm asking if you could be able to, to participate and be able to come to our community and work with it to find out how we could be able to, to address the problems in the area in a rightful way. That's all.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thanks for coming in. I'm sure Mr. Hernandez and his staff will be happy to talk to you about it. We can't obviously address it in council today, but I think he got the message.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for coming. All right, that closes the public comment period. Now, I've been informed that we're going to continue item 38. The chief is tied up somewhere else and felt understandably that he ought to be here. So we're going to continue item 38 until Tuesday, and the people who had asked to speak have decided to wait until Tuesday to do so. So that, I believe, leaves us just two closed session items, one from each meeting.
Tuesday will be August 1st.
Tuesday, right. 38 will go to Tuesday, August 1st.
Madam President.
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
May I request that we have forthwith on item number 35, please?
I think we could do that.
Thank you so much.
Forthwith on item 35. Yes, you may request it, and in addition, you'll get it.
Thank you. I'm doing well today.
Yes. All right. So we're going to then go into closed session for the regular meeting, and then we are also going to go into closed session for the special meeting item that comes up then. So I have to ask all of you who are not involved in either of those to please depart and have a nice weekend.
Madam President.
Yes.
17 and 19, can I ask those forthwith?
Certainly. Forthwith on 17 and 19. And while we are clearing the room for the executive session, we will also attempt to clear the desk.
Those for posting and referral?
Those are approved for posting and referring.
Councilmembers request to be excused from council. Councilmember Galanter requests to be excused on August 11th for city business. This meets policy.
Good. It's a good thing, because I have to be there.
Councilmember Pacheco requests to be excused on August 4th for city business. This meets policy.
All right, we'll let him go, too.
And Councilmember Wax requests to be excused on August 1st and 2nd for personal business. This meets policy.
In that case, we'll let him go, too.
The desk is clear, so for the closed session items.
All right. So we're now waiting for the room to get cleared, which seems to be taking a while.
You want to call number one forthwith for CFA?
Number one on the special meeting. Number one on the special meeting. All right, we're back on the air, but we're still trying to figure out if we can complete our other executive session that I'm told has to be done today. No? Well, we've lost our quorum, so I don't know what else to tell you. Item 37 was...
Item number 37 will be left on the desk. That will be continued during the next meeting on Tuesday.
Continue till Tuesday. All right. Adjourning motions. Let me start on behalf of Mr. Wax. He's asked that we adjourn in memory of Dorothy Corwin, whom many of you will know mainly because she's Bruce Corwin's mother. She survived by, we all do, survived by her son Bruce and her daughter Bonnie Fuller. And I'd like to ask also that we adjourn in memory of Jay Stanley Mullin, whom you probably know primarily as one of the named partners in the law firm Shepherd, Mullin, Richter, and Hampton. He was 93 years old, died of natural causes. He lived in Marina Del Rey and Catalina, survived by, I can't read all of this. There were four survivors, and I'm sure they and all of his partners in the law firm, of whom there seem to be thousands, will, will miss him a lot. Mr. Fuhrer? No? Anybody over here? Mrs. Walters?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have three adjourning motions here, the first of which is for Mr. Leon Everett Whaley, who is a former employee for the City of Los Angeles in two different positions. One, as Executive Director of Human Relations from '67 to 1971, and a supervisor of the Department of Recreation and Parks, where he retired in 1986 and went on to work with Councilman, former Councilman Gil Lindsay for a couple of years, and thereafter he retired permanently. He is survived by his wife, Emma Jean Whaley, his eight children, Leon, Oliver, Helen, Cecilia, Maddie, Elaine, Jacqueline, and Dorothy. The second one, I would ask the council to adjourn in memory of Annette Williams. She was a resident of the 9th Council District for over 55 years, attended Jefferson High School, and was a very kind woman who always found time to help the needy and church in the community. She's survived by her husband, Artis Williams, and six children, Linda, Lisa, Sharon, Cynthia, Vette, and Curtis. She also leaves behind 15 grandchildren. The other one, council members, is a very, very sad one. It's in memory of the Pico Rivera family, Flores family, where the father and three children were murdered in their home. The victims are relatives of a city employee, Mr. Ruben Flores of the Bureau of Sanitation. And they're also friends of a staff member in my office, Evangelina Sanchez. The deceased are survived by the wife and mother Sylvia Flores, daughter Sylvia and sister Esperanza Flores, and an adopted niece, Laura Rita. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Pacheco?
I'd like to be a second on that motion. I understand Ruben Flores is a CD14 constituent, so I'd like to be second.
Of course. Okay. Call the roll. We are adjourned. Have a...